Staff and other people in this village that is our school district that have all worked together to, um, to help these kids. Um, a couple of things, I, I jotted down some notes because I wanted to be able to remember. Um, uh, the first thing that I noticed is that there are real rock stars in this district. There are people who are getting recognition after recognition and it's really true. It, it's so clear the difference they're making in these kids' lives. Uh, the middle school got a lot of love that night talking about, um, the middle school transitions working well. That was an excellent thing. A number of parents talked about their kids feeling cared for and like they belong and feeling excited to come to school. And I found myself thinking if we could, if we could make all the kids in the school feel that way, we'd be doing an excellent job. Um, and the other thing that was just really nice to see was staff members cheering for each other. There were cases where a staff member honored another staff member who had stepped up in one way or another. Um, but just in general, there were lots of high fives and cheers and, uh, it was just a really, um, wonderful environment. So, uh, definitely enjoyed being there. Um, can I throw in my other experience from today? Uh, today I also had the pleasure of what may become my second favorite experience of the year. Um, today I was able to attend, uh, the performance of Beauty and the Beast at Melville Elementary School. And, um, I, I was just grinning ear to ear through the whole performance. The kids did a fantastic job. Um, whoever was, uh, taking care of the production values really stepped it up this year in terms of costumes and sets. It was very impressive. So, um, it, I certainly hope they'll continue that tradition as well. It's just enjoyable start to finish.
Good way to take kids loving.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yep. Okay. Um, uh, the other announcement and, uh, another kudo for the district is that Portsmouth, uh, School District has been nominated, uh, for a Lead by Example Clean Energy Award. Um, David Hool has also, uh, our Air Mac Facilities Director been nominated individually. And these are awards by the Rhode Island Office of Energy Resources. Both nominations are in the clean energy category for our work to completely update all of the Portsmouth School District facilities, including the schools, admin building, fieldhouse and stadium lights with, um, energy efficient LED lighting. Um, so Governor McKee, Senator Whitehouse will be attending the ceremony, uh, tomorrow. And Dr. Kenworthy's presence, um, has been requested as our district rep. Um, and the winner will be announced. We haven't won it yet, but it's still an honor to.
I will let you know.
It's still an honor to be, uh, nominated. And I think it speaks to really the hard work that the facilities have done to, to try and make the buildings, uh, energy efficient, which is good for the environment and saves money. So all, all in all, a win-win. Um, now on to our favorite part of the evening. We're doing some recognitions tonight. Dr. Kenworthy.
Dr. Coopland, uh, so speaking of facilities, uh, we are here this evening in our newly renovated, uh, called the Little Theater, um, after the Little family, uh, here at Portsmouth Middle School. And, um, you know, it's hard to, uh, remember what it used to look like, but, uh, we have, uh, certainly, uh, you know, repeatedly updated this facility this past year. Uh, we were able to do so under, uh, COVID related funding that we had received. And a portion of it, we could designate, uh, towards facility, uh, projects. And this was one of the items on our list, but this evening we want to recognize Mrs. Doreen Phillips. So I know it's here. Uh, she really helped to spearhead this project for us. So Mrs. Phillips, if you want to come on up. This is our new district of the year for next year, but until next, next year begins, Mrs. Phillips officially our current, uh, district teacher of the year last year. So even before any of this took place, uh, based on all of the great things that she does here, uh, she had won that award. So, yeah, we can't thank you enough for, uh, yeah, this, this would not have happened without you. So thank you.
I really feel we need to give her a standing ovation.
Hey, thank you. Um, this was a team effort. It wasn't just me. Um, Dr. Kenworthy and Dr. Um, Bear said that I wanted to finish it because we had gotten a grant, um, for the sound system to update it. And in that grant, I had put out the scope of what I was trying to do. So I thanked them for helping them out, helping us out. Um, Dr. Bear's friends set up a team. So it was myself, Dr. Um, Mr. Cool, the director of facilities, Dr. Masterson, our principal, Ryan Randall, the custodian. And then I added, um, Mr. Kudo as well, because he would be the one using the most role in this school. And so I thought it was important to make sure that I, uh, wanted to hear. So it was definitely a team effort and I thank you for allowing it to get done. I hope this is worth for many years to come. And I also thank everybody that, um, selected me for the teacher of the year. That was a great honor this year. And it was eye opening going up, working with all the other teachers and staying with Ryan and everything. So I do thank you all for.
Uh, next up, uh, we have two groups that we wanted to recognize this evening. Uh, so the first, our Model UN group from Portsmouth High School. So they compete in a number of competitions throughout the year. Uh, and we get updates on all of the great, uh, work taking place and the awards that have won, have been won. Uh, and then we usually wait till we get to the end of the year to be able to do one big recognition. So I know Mr. Cassidy is here this evening, uh, who, uh, spearheads. Congratulations on, you know, Mr. Cassidy always keeps us updated on, on all of the great things happening there. Um, and I'm sure you have some things to say, uh, to help.
What's it said that you never, never pass sniper? Um, I would like to come here and give recognition to this group. This group of kids have continued a tradition that started with extortion plan back in 2009. From a group of students says, we don't have a model UN plan. You need to put this into place. And we have, and over the last 20 years, almost 20 years, um, we've gotten better and better and more successful. If we just, just keep re-upping the game. So this year they took part in a number of different conferences, which I'm gonna let the two most important members this year come up and speak to that and a little bit about what they accomplished this year. But this is 21st century learning personified. I mean, they do all the skills, all the things we're supposed to be training and teaching them. They prepare, they do the research, they go in, they perform using all those different skills that we emphasize, saying that you're gonna go and use these for the rest of your lives. And they do. And so every school that we attended this year, whether it be UConn or whether it be Brown or, uh, BU or BC, we've had students that have gone there. They've been on these secretariat that are running these programs at collegiate level. So they haven't stopped. They kept going and then they graduate and they move on to do those things professionally. And I couldn't be prouder. So I'm gonna bring up the two that have sort of been my wing people all year long. Kira McHale, come on. If you walk into my room or if you see me moving through the building, these two are right there along with me. Um, and they're gonna talk to you a little bit about what they accomplished this year and over the last four years.
My first one to say, like, with that, Mr. Cassidy, Model UN, the DAP, yeah, thank you. The true heart of it from like our freshman year, like you're the only people in our class doing it is online. Um, so this year we had like almost 30 people in the club, uh, in total. He has been like the true rock of it. Um, but I want to touch on what he said, how Model UN is 21st century learning personified. I've talked to actually a lot of you about this topic, but Model UN provides students so many skills that they get honestly nowhere else in school. They learn public speaking and I know that other people this year can testify to how much it improves on your self-confidence, your self-esteem. Um, a big thing I think with our generation is that kids aren't able to speak publicly. And they're really scared to even like do a, a presentation to the 15 person class. Um, so like being able to, it's like, you know, speak extensively to a huge room, like, you know, it's like 150 people. Um, it's experience that gives them huge head start, um, in their careers. Um, I just want to thank all of you for allowing us to continue to do this for all this time, talking to other students from other districts. And we're saying that their school committees are very hesitant, like they'll go on trips like this, you know, multiple weekend long trips and like that, miss school for seven days. So thank you all for continuing to let us do this. And I trust you all to take care of our little babies that are coming to this year.
That's gonna be hard to follow up. I don't have that many new things to say, but like Mikiya said, we started during the COVID year. And just being on Zoom, not even just going to conferences on Zoom, which was not that fun. But meeting Mr. Cassidy and the graduating seniors that year on Zoom was scary because you didn't know them. We had never really met them, but there was something that we really saw in them that made us wanna continue. And so when we got to get to go to school in person, mine was really the first thing on my mind. And our first conference was Bosman at BU, our sophomore year, our first and personal conference. And that was genuinely the start of an addiction. After you go, even though I didn't do that well, I just wanted more. I was like, I need to go back. I need to do this again. I need to get better. And even though it's scary, even though your heart is racing through the entire thing, every time I have to get up to speak, what am I gonna say? What if I mess up my some of my words? It's, uh, it's genuinely, if you wanna go back and continue doing it. And I spoke to many of you, um, during the club walk through this year. And I think something that I had said was that I genuinely think this is the best club in the school, given that it may be a little biased. Though what it provides for students is so much more than just public speaking or learning about world events, uh, now or in the past. It also just provides a community that is really unique to Model UN. Not only will you meet people in the school club, you meet people at different conferences. And whether they live in Oklahoma or Texas, or they live in Rhode Island, you can really talk to them and find out where they're coming from, making friends. And it's something that a lot of students really don't get to experience. And so I feel so blessed. I know my classmates probably do too, that we got to have that experience. And I tried to tell my friends all throughout high school to do it. And a lot of them actually did finally join this year and they all regretted not doing it earlier because it's just that amazing. So thank you again for continuing to let us go in these conferences and gonna continue to make you proud. They're very.
Now modesty aside, uh, Kira this year took part in six conferences and took awards in almost everyone.
No, in everyone.
In everyone. If McHale's not far behind, I mean, you're looking at dominance here. And I just, they started out so quiet. I don't know what happened to them. But they are, they are a force. And you guys have been here for the last few years. It was just last year, same thing, the year before that, same thing. So it's something in the water. It's something in the parenting. We're doing something right in this community. And I wanna, I wanna reiterate how important it is, uh, that we get your support, that we keep doing this. And in that vein, I'm losing these two, which breaks my heart. There's no doubt about it. But I'd like to bring up the captains for next year to talk about what their vision is for next year, which looks a little like this year. So you can see that the road is paved for further success. Heather, Ashley, Lain.
Um, I really just wanna thank all of you guys for your support and letting us do this. It's really such a great opportunity. It's, I'm sure you think it's a good point to find out. Uh, but I really, you really had a really successful year last year. And I just wanna kind of point that out. In November, we got to go to UConn and we saw a lot of new delegates, you know, as, uh, I think, like you mentioned, like we almost had like 30 delegates go, which is a really cool thing. And then the following weekend, we had a lot of our seniors and a lot of our turnovers going to Brown, which is really nice to see, something on the avenue circuit, um, for conferences. In February, we went to Bosman, um, to BU. Um, really cool. Again, we brought, I think it was like 25 delegates there. I mean, you could see these same people who, you know, they're kind of starting out at Eaglemont and do much more in, um, Bosman. So it's really cool to see. Um, and then again, in March, we went to Eaglemont or BC, which is cool, especially because, yes, delegates going next year. Um, and we really, that's when we kind of dominated a lot of the people that got to try out some new rooms. And we saw a lot of new awards and a lot of these people who had joined, you know, just this year, um, and seeing the growth was really cool. Um, and then in April this year, we went to Dartmouth, which is really cool that we got to do two Ivy Conferences. Um, and again, like we did really, really well. Um, we had some cool rooms over there and a lot of people just did, like amazing. It was just so much growth. And I just really wanna thank all you guys for letting us, uh, go on so many trips and giving us this opportunity. It's really been amazing. Thank you so much.
So like Ashley said, and like the boss will said, it's been really an honor to be able to participate in these conferences. Um, a bunch of schools don't really have Model UN. And like going to the conferences, like as he said, it must be something in the water. It's UC delegates, like they're just sitting there, they're not doing anything. Our delegates are like always in it. They're always really, uh, committed to like researching, to taking, you know, parts seriously. And I've had the pleasure of being in a lot of their rooms. Honestly, I see that. And I don't know what we do differently, but we definitely do it differently and it definitely works. Um, and we're planning to continue that. So we already discussed upcoming conferences for next year. Um, UConn, which we do pretty much every year, uh, resigned for NYU this year. Um, it's definitely a big trip, but it does have a lot of perks. We get to go see the actual UN. Um, it's a four day trip, which yes, that, we're missing more school. But honestly, being, being able to see the, uh, UN, being in the UARS with like some of my closest friends, honestly, such a great opportunity. Um, we've often talked about Bosman, just Boston University. We always go to that one. Um, and we're either deciding to be Dartmouth or Eaglemont, which is BC. Say you happen to fall on the same weekend next year. Um, and that's always a hard decision, but I know we're starting to get the paperwork together. We wanna put these in as possible so we can figure out who is coming, allow them to, um, get those numbers and, um, start fundraising for these. So we'll be able to dominate next year. Yeah.
But like everyone has said, thank you all so much for giving us this opportunity to go to new places, meet so many new people and just like hone in on so many different skills. I know myself, I've done this so much work and I've gotten so much more confident speaking with different people, speaking with different topics. And I know I've just become so much more aware of different, like cultural and global issues. And so even though we're losing a lot of great seniors this year, um, we definitely know that we're gonna build up our program next year. Um, we're planning to host some sort of high school conference led by our team. And we're gonna invite local high schools to bring their delegates and anyone interested in Model UN to come and try out this amazing activity. So thank you so much for your support.
I appreciate your time. And I need to make one more thank you for this evening. This trip doesn't happen, these trips don't happen the, the way they do without the support of the unsung hero in all this. That's actually my wife, Mrs. Cassidy. Official, um, female chaperone that attends all these. We get to consolidate a room, which is gonna be, which she's not happy with. And more than that, we get to visit exotic places like stores in Connecticut. Weekends together with teenagers that are, that aren't our own. The, this group that you see in front of us are our extended family. And we do, I, I could be more around, you know, I'm so excited for the chance for them to get up here and show you what they, you notice that I'm laying ass notes. But the rest of them are skidding off the cob. And I could, um, this, this is what I want to continue. This is what I want to make sure that, that we don't let go. And he couldn't be here tonight because he's an attractive and I've been worried. But Kevin Denard is also another one that attends these conferences when our numbers get up. And I wish he were here tonight because he deserves some kudos for this as well. Um, he's bought into this without having any knowledge really about what UN, Model UN is. And over the years, it's become sort of the guiding force behind us. And I also appreciate it that there's a lot of people that make this work. And they deserve that type of knowledge. So thank you again. And I hope to see you this time next year.
Great. For our final recognition this evening, um, another group that does not, uh, get enough, um, opportunity for recognition. Um, you know, they are a fabulous benefit to our district. Um, and there's just one component of our PHS band, um, operation that we're gonna recognize, uh, this evening. But the symphonic band, uh, recently went off, um, I believe it. And we'll hear more from Mr. Roush. And it was a multi, um, state competition, uh, and they took first place at the Music in the Parks Festival. So we wanted to use that opportunity, uh, to recognize this evening, Mr. Roush, the symphonic band. But really all that encompasses everything that happens there with the PHS band. So Mr. Roush, come on up.
Thank you guys very much. I think the, the current theme is here is, uh, how great it is here that the support that we receive from it is administration of the school department. Um, it's trips like this that we get your support, that we're able to do this. Um, and what I think what made this a little bit more sweet was we had 22 seniors that were part of band program. Um, and four years ago, these seniors came to the high school and they missed an entire year of band because of COVID. They had to start their freshman year in our auditorium 10 feet apart with masks. And music and singing and playing was one of the hardest things to do during that time period. Um, and these seniors could have said no in eighth grade, I'm not, I'm not doing that because, you know, the school system was shut down in March. Uh, and they made their choice to continue with band. We started the next school year. Um, it was, it was a mess. Um, so they missed an entire year of learning. Um, and we knew it was gonna be a long way back to get these kids where they, you know, where they should be. Uh, we often express like this, so when we take them to their festival, it was a really, really nice way to end their senior year. And for the underclassmen too, because how they started off so distant, 10 feet apart, that was their freshman year. And they came together so close. And we went into this festival without any expectations. We competed against bands from Vermont, New York, New Jersey. Um, and we pulled it off. Um, the jazz band, um, competed against five other schools. They got a second place. Uh, and the symphonic band came in first and they were, they were ecstatic. And I was, I was more happy for the seniors because it was a great way to end their high school career. After the start that we as a country went through and to finish the way they did was really, I was proud of them. Um, and I think that will always stick with me on this trip, that the support that you guys give us, even through COVID, making us, giving us allowances to, to play together, giving, giving us the okay to do these experiences. Um, it's, it's, I'm very, very, very proud to work in this district for the support that we receive for these students. Um, and I give shout outs to Mr. Kudo back there, Mrs. Phillips. Um, without their help, um, we would not be where we're at, right here with this first place. So, um, much thanks go to them. Um, there really is a strong relay team here that we got going from Mr. Kudo to Mrs. Phillips, to Mrs. Lente, to myself. So, uh, it's, it's a great feeling. Um, and I wanna thank you guys for your continued support on all this and, uh, much appreciated. Thank you, thank you.
Well, I think we're all immensely proud of both groups. And I think some school committee members might like to add to that. Miss Keen, you wanna start off?
Yeah, I just wanna thank you for creating such a good community. I know the band, I mean, it's very close, but I especially appreciate, um, all the hard work that Model UN has put in. And I think it really shows that, like, their students are very well-rounded and giving back to, um, you know, this international community that you're being exposed to. It's gonna, all of your skill sets, um, are gonna carry you to foreign life and, uh, expose you to East Core or, um, you know, some really exciting career paths. But, um, well, I've worked abroad and it's, it's been an amazing experience what you're able to do right now. I know you guys are gonna do great things. So thank you for making us proud and, uh, and really I love to see that community that you've created, um, supporting each other.
So I, again, I, I think, you know, we talk about community and you guys just spoke to band and Model UN. And, you know, you just exceeded, which is really, really wonderful. So big round of applause. It wouldn't happen, so.
All these years, Mrs. Cassidy's been a meme on a forum that I. Nice to finally meet you.
You should give her her own certificate. We'll give you a round of. Well, we know you certainly are more than welcome to stay for the entire meeting if you like, but you also can feel free to exit whatever that is. Stage left, stage right, stage left if you want, um, for the, and not stay for the rest of the meeting. But thank you all so much. We're really proud to be able to take this opportunity. Good luck next year. Are you, you know, you talk about the flex credit? I mean, that's essentially flex credit. All right, moving on with the, uh, more business part of our meeting. Uh, the district building committee had its meeting on May fifteenth. Uh, no votes were taken. It was really just an update of ongoing projects, plans for the summer, um, and, uh, status reports. So, so nothing really, uh, drastic there. Dr. Kenworthy, you're, okay, yep. Um, health and wellness, Ms. Kelly.
Uh, we had our last health moment meeting at the theater on Thursday, 16th. Um, we got updates from each school, uh, from the Web Tell Me School Coalition, from Chartwells, um, and from the Prevention Coalition. And, uh, we also, uh, thought about where we wanna go going forward. Um, and how health and wellness and the climate culture and the equity committees might overlap a little more in the future. Um, that's, it's a little more workshop we need to figure out what we're gonna be going forward on this.
Was there, was it ideas or?
Um, no, just kind of starting the process.
Starting the conversation.
Yeah.
Well, um, Dr. Kenworthy hosted the safety committee on May 22nd. This is with police, fire, school officials, uh, meets under exec to, uh, to oversee, um, existing safety, um, situations around the district. Uh, finance?
Uh, the finance committee met, uh, the finance committee met on the 22nd. And among the items we discussed, which will be discussed later in the. And among the items we discussed, which will be discussed later in the business agenda, um, were the, um, fee schedules for our facility and field rentals, which have not been revised since 2016. So, in general, we proposed modest increases, um, in particular for the new gym because we've included the air conditioning in the new gym. And we anticipate that the electricity expense may be significant. So, we need to raise the money to cover that. Uh, because it can't otherwise include it in the budget, um. We, uh, discussed our current expectations with regard to, um, revenue forecast for, for the fiscal year 2024, for which we'll, um, apparently have a modest surplus. And, um, those were unanimous votes, by the way. And the, uh, the third item was unanimous vote. It was made to approve a number of salary increases for the administrative staff for fiscal year 2024, 25.
That will be voting on in.
It will be voting on later.
Great, thank you. Personnel Subcommittee met on May 22nd, um, and, uh, voted, uh, two zero to forward, uh, business item A and B, uh, for consideration, uh, by the full committee. We can talk about that in more detail when we, uh, get up there. Any public comment? Anybody online? Seeing none, uh, turning to our presentations for tonight. Dr. Kenery.
Uh, thank you. First up, uh, and I know we have, uh, representative from Chartwells. We're going to get an update on, uh, some of the changes that they've instituted this year. And I think plans going forward and Dr. Rivera, uh, who works very closely with them, I don't know if you want to say anything?
I just want to thank Donna and her entire team. Um, we've worked really hard to make some significant changes. And I'm really, I'm so pleased with all of the change that you've made. So, thank you so much. And I know that when we had discussions at our health and wellness committee, um, we are all so very pleased. So, thank you for that.
So, thanks for having me, folks. For those who do not know me, my name's Donna Hopperes. I am the new director for services for the child nutrition program here in Portsmouth. Um, I come to most recently around January time. But with a history of about 10 years in child nutrition, as well as about 25 years in culinary and food service operation. All the way from fine dining, corporate catering, restaurants, hotels, and so on and so forth. I wish I made the change to education 20 years ago. Life would have been a little different, but I'm here now. So, I do come to you with a great deal of experience and hopefully some of the information that I have can be brought to our district here to help get us to kind of where I want to be. Um, I did put a little slide presentation together for you, just kind of give you a little bit of updates. So, and I don't know entirely how often you can see someone from Chartwells in the future or in the past, whatnot. I will tell you in the future. I hope that you do invite me back, um, because I would like to keep me there for a little bit, I want to know what's going on. But we do have, um, some new team members, myself, as well as my area director. Solange Morrison is, uh, made in State of Rhode Island. That's been here for a long time. She has a ton of, ton of resources, a ton of great knowledge. And one of the things that she brings to the table is a ton of innovation. She's always trying to do new things, exciting things, much to do with local purchasing, all the way from, you know, smaller farms, fresh eggs from, you know, farms out in Smithfield. Poor, fit me folks enjoying today, um, which I hope you enjoy, uh, came right from Black, uh, Blackbird Farm in Smithfield. And Solange is a big part of that. She works a lot with farm fresh right out of Providence. And works directly with procuring us and getting essentially some one-on-one, like this is going to be just for us. This is just a Chartwell school, so on and so forth. So, uh, she's a great resource to have. Um, below there, I do have my assistant director. She's been working with Portsmouth for basically no length of how long we've been here as well. Um, our Rhode Island chef of the state is Lori Phillips. And then we also have a dietitian as a resource. And then also new, um, as recently as February is Neil, Neil Andrews. So, Neil's a great chef. We, that was him, February, knew within about 15 minutes that he would be perfect there. So, he's been making his way around to the schools, doing some special events that you'll see a few images of. And the goal with Chef Neil is to get our team, our in-service team, our folks frontline here every day, where they need to be culinary wise and be out there doing some fun and great special events with the students for us. So, um, the calendar will get booked up quite a bit. In addition, I do work, you know, quite a bit with Liz and, and Rachel and Chris, but if folks would like to be invited to some of these events when we have things going on, we can certainly add that to your calendar as well. Um, just a little bit of history. We've been a partner for quite some time now. We have about 17 associates running 108-day operation in our chat, in the district. And right now, on an average, we serve over 22,000 meals a month. So, we're, we're serving quite a few meals, getting a lot of students. Uh, some of the accomplishments on the next slide, we do have some great pictures. Um, I'm looking at black and white, so it's not great. But, um, great here, we have our local event there. Um, and that specifically was when we did local beef from Blackbird Farms. So, there we did, um, a great taco slash nacho bar where students were able to use fresh greens, local greens that are hydroponically grown right in Providence, Uguthan greens, as well as cheese from our fancy creme brulee, um, and the beef as well. And, um, one of the reasons we're able to do some of these local items is for some SCA funds, some supply chain assistance funds that we still have, that we also have set aside for next year specifically. And those items will be used for all these different event and day that we do these local events. These, this presentation was done basically after April, March, December, but another thing that we found that's important to our students, um, you know, through my, you know, being on web, uh, wellness committee and everything as well, is, you know, a variety of items and having a lot more options. So, March was our plant power month. It also coincided with our wellness week here within the district. So, we did make an effort to, um, on a daily basis, have some things going on. That included Chef Neil being on, um, the yogurt bike that would generate and blend a smoothie and the students were able to try just by the actual force of him, you know, riding a bike. Um, in addition to that, we had this great watermelon poke bowl where students get to try things that are different for some. Um, and we had a couple, four or five other plant-based items on those menus. We also partnered with, um, a possible burger at the high school where they came in and we menuized essentially what we were running with regular burgers on a possible burger. So, we gave our students opportunity to try it and general consensus was, oh, yes, if you put a lot of stuff on it. They did enjoy it. And, um, there was, you know, a few like this, this isn't, this isn't vegan. So, um, it's great. For me, when we talk to students and get involved with students, you know, some of the big eye hours for them is the sustainability part of it, like, you know, how much it actually costs and uses as resources to get one pound of beef to a plant as opposed to a plant-based item. So, um, we're listening and we're trying to, you know, do what's important for our students. So. Um, so the next slide is, you know, essentially a lot of information. I don't want to, you know, like, go too much into it, but the takeaway on this is I did try to do apples to apples. And this is our breakfast. So, if you scroll down just a little bit more, Heather, I'm not sure where other folks are seeing the whole page. But we have some opportunity here. This is opportunity in breakfast. Breakfast is something that continues to decline year over year.
Says Middletown on that.
See?
Says Middletown on that slide.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
The next one is Portsmouth, I think.
I'm so sorry. This is your information though.
Oh, okay. Oh, the first one. Okay. Yeah. All right.
Who was my operator? Sorry about that. I do apologize. Uh, but these are your numbers. And, you know, there's opportunity here. I have applied for a grant with the Terry Council to possibly purchase some movable kiosks that we would work with the high school with Giles and Jay and speak to, um, possibly set these areas up in non-cafeeteria areas. So, we have challenges with the students that are driving or being, you know, driven in from their parents or with their friends, stopping and getting breakfast helped somewhere. The inconvenience of actually going to the cafeteria. So, the idea with this is the kiosk that maybe we can get them something quickly, easy. Rather than those such as a smoothie, such as a heart fed, something as a good solid energy bar. We work and purchase items from, um, Shribak, which is a local company done in Cumberland. And the product's fantastic. And one of those bars have more fiber, energy, extra protein. Some things that really can kind of help and sustain the student from the day through the morning. So, um, looking forward to hopefully getting that and hopefully being able to incorporate it. Um, I think you'll see increases in breakfast if we can do something like that. Um, on the next slide is the lunches and again, year over year. But the biggest thing here, the biggest takeaway is the fact that, uh, we are serving more lunches daily than we are were last year. So, to, to the 43 meals, um, and that's a good number. Um, so that tells me that they are enjoying what's on the menu, uh, that they're coming back more, that they're, you know, liking the offerings that we're having. So, want to keep seeing that number drive up. And then on the next slide, overall, you know, it's a little bit more financial. There is a decrease in, um, the overall daily or the overall total, but that has a lot to do with reimbursement. So, last year at State of Rhode Island, USDA work was actually paying you more money per meal. It was 48 cents more last year on top of the regular reimbursement rate. We are now only getting eight cents more. So, that's a significant difference there because as you can see, our à la carte sales are up per day and catering is up, so on and so forth. So, the sales are up. It's the reimbursement that we're seeing happening. And then, um, the next slide, um, essentially just kind of want to talk a little bit about some of the programs that we're doing and where we're going for the future and what we're continuing with. But these are actual events that you'll see on these slides. So, the first one, um, it would do, you know, with student choice here at, I'm sorry, over at the high school. Um, we did see a few folks here for student choice. It's the concept in which students are allowed to vote in real time up against two different culinary concepts. And whichever one wins will be on the menu next month. So, for example, this particular student choice, we did our, um, two options with box choice. And then we also had our chat house. So, we have Indian cuisine up against Asian cuisine. The students would go back, use the QR code. We had the smart TV setup for them. And then they would vote. So, if somebody really wanted to see something win, they would vote again. So, they would kind of go back and forth with each other and kind of, you know, see in the end, box choice won. Um, and we did have it on the menu. So. And then for the next slide, and this is our wellness week, that is Chef Neil, um, generating smoothies for the students. So, the students over here on the six side are able to enjoy that. And then Mubus, Chef Neil again. Um, the students love him. So, Mubus is a concept that we offer at our elementary schools. And I was speaking with Emily earlier as well. And essentially what this is, is the direct correlation on the food that you take in and the effects that it has on you. What, what can give you energy? What can make you more alert, smart, so on and so forth? There are different types of swag that goes along with it, stickers, the vans and everything. I'm giving students have fun with it. We have characters that are called movies based off of what the product is, what the food is. And, um, in this event, they have the cucumber tomato salad. So, they did really like it there and we ended up putting it out, um, the next week on the extra, extra bar and the students really enjoyed it there again. So. Uh, the next slide is Global Eats. Global Eats is another concept that we also bring to our elementary and our, um, secondary, both of them. And this is a concept where we're trying to really start to try to introduce different types of cuisines to students. So, um, bringing diversity through food, it's a great opportunity. We currently have six different countries. This particular country was Italy. So, we did cheese tortellini with the, uh, fresh marinara and fresh basilade. So, they were able to try it. But we also have, you know, China, India. Again, we also have Korean, Caribbean, and like one or two other ones. So, it really does have a good variety of student, uh, of choices that students can try. My goal before school closes this year is to actually have all of these on the calendar through the school year next year. Planning is one of the biggest parts of all of these. You need to lock in the dates. You need to prepare the staff, get everything ready. So, if we do it now, it's set. We will be able to do it. So. And I think, yeah, running on the global eats. Oh, one of the things I'm very happy about now. So, um, Portsmouth was able to have the opportunity to start from the fresh fruit vegetable program this year. This is a USDA funded grant that is generally given to higher, uh, pre-produced areas, 40% or more generally. And it's an opportunity in which students are able to try a sample every day for as many days as you want throughout the week based on the actual total allotment of the grant. So, they can try and sample items that they may not have the opportunity to do at home. So, some unique things. They can try parsnip, caracara oranges, um, you know, star fruit, things that, you know, dragon, things that they might not have the chance to see. And then if they do try it, there is, you know, the likelihood down the line that maybe you're in the park with mom and dad or somebody and and see it that, you know, they're like, oh, we have that. I liked it. Can we get it? Can we try it? But it is all about trying to encourage and helping make those smarter choices at the elementary level, smart snacky. And really trying to incorporate some, you know, different diverse sort of snacking habits with them. So, this grant was only allowed to Portsmouth due to, unfortunately, or fortunately. Fortunately, other districts opting out of it. And we've been encouraged to continue to apply again for this year. But that came up last week.
That's excellent.
Yeah. So, we're going to do it currently inside the two schools. We will probably be able to, if we get the grant, do it for a third day, uh, a week next year. And the key here, um, is an educational piece that goes along with it as well. I did forget to mention that. The key here is obviously allergens. When we're serving students within our cafeteria space, we have acknowledged those allergens. This program is served in their classrooms. So, that's where we really have to have buy-in of those home teachers to assist and to help. And working with the nurses and the teachers and everything there, they've been really, really great with, you know, making sure that the students that cannot have it do not have it. And we have been fortunate enough that we know the plan. We can make sure that student has an alternative as well. Fingers crossed that we get that for next year as well. So, uh, coming up in, coming down the line for next year, um, the goal is to, you know, enhance and expand it. We have the SCA funds that I spoke about set aside specifically for those local products, which will be, you know, great to feature. We are also going to be continuing, Heather, can you slide go down just a little bit? Please, thank you. Our sustainability, uh, initiatives. So, we have legislation that has been passed and will be in effect January 1, 2025. And it's called Get the Foam Out. So, Get the Foam Out is legitimately exactly what it says. There is no more foam in any type of municipality. Now, there is no mandate on this. Um, there is no one that's going to oversee, watch what we're doing. But it's the right thing to do and it's the thing that we want to start doing and start to incorporate. Here in Portsmouth, you are miles ahead of other districts. We're already doing a lot of great things. We already have the compostable trays and everything as well. We're already doing some of this, uh, reading in elementary. But the goal coming into the school year is to cross the board, all school secondary levels, so on and so forth. And that will be composting front of the house and the back of the house. So, we've worked with writing a grant. I will talk and work with Rachel a little bit more on that. And part of that grant is being able to work with, we're doing this cycling recovery or the other one.
Race?
Race, yeah. Race not. Race not. That's. Waste not, that's right. Um, and they will work specifically with some of the composting companies. And we will start to work with our students where and how you compost, where post where, so on and so forth. They do a great job of making students kind of like. Be captain of the day, learn it, and then they can teach someone else. So it it's something that, you know, when they start it early. It continues throughout their education and brings it all the way up. Um, so the commitment is to starting that everywhere as well as completely in the back of the house as well. Obviously, this will help to increase the diversion put into landfill because we no longer have any space there. And we'll have. So municipalities are really urged by this legislation to start doing the right thing, so. Um, and then of course feature the focus on local. And then the equipment upgrades, uh Portsmouth has been in a good position um with. Covid funding that, you know, when there was. Some extra reimbursements, we were able to have a little bit of funding that now needs to go back into the school lunch program. And that gives us an opportunity to upgrade some equipment in the kitchen, enhance it. Um, move things around and really be able to offer, especially at the elementary school, like a real good lunch. Um, I was speaking with somebody that, you know, there are elementary schools right now that we have half-size ovens. So their ovens are this big. So when they have pizza on Friday, which they love their pizza, um. They can only have a small, little individual square pizza or round pizza. They actually don't get to experience a pizza pie cut into eight wedges, so on and so forth. So the ovens have been something that we're looking for a cure, so they can have a real. Pizza and get to enjoy that. And then they'll be able to do a lot more cooking, you know, everything there. The extra extra bar for all the elementary, which is that great program that students are allowed to go up. Um, have some decision-making in what they're having on their tray every day, Tuesday for extra vegetables. Um, and take what they want on it. So we, we really. Have a lot of success with that. Some of these schools were, were restoring that extra extra bar every single lunch because the students just buy into it that much. And then some really exciting stuff at the high school. We're looking to possibly have. New service line equipment, but one of them including a row to three oven, which will allow us to take fresh whole raw chicken. And actually cook, roast it, debone it, and use that chicken across the board. So if it's chicken salad that day, that's chicken. If it's chicken on your salad, that would be the chicken that you're eating. So those are our goals. Um, and I think. I think that might keep me a little busy. That's my intent, but um as I mentioned earlier, you know, my goal is to be. Very forward and very focused and very upfront and present. So everybody should know how to get in touch with me. Um, you know, working with the wellness committee, we're also planning on doing student advisory meetings next year. Really getting that one-on-one conversation with the students, having their feedback, getting what they want. Um, I do have the fortunate. You know, the being fortunate enough to see the students when I am in the schools, but it's, it's a lot of schools to get to. Um, so having these meetings and talking to them and seeing what they really want is going to be helpful to, you know. Drive participation, feed more students and ultimately overall satisfaction. So that's what I'm here for. If you folks need me, definitely reach out. Does anyone have any questions?
I think we will, but thank you for that presentation.
You're welcome.
Clear, excellent quality and variety of improvements. And I think Mr. Payo, you have a comment question?
Yes, uh, I'll, I'll start with comments. Uh. I, I, I will say that I was really happy to see this presentation from. The time it feels like a millennia ago when I chaired Health and Wellness Committee uh a, a, as a newbie on the committee. Um, and seeing the improvements that have happened over the last couple of years has been really. As a parent in the district, really great to see. Uh, when we went to a conference a couple of months ago. There was an actual big focus on, and the one things that I absolutely am an advocate for is just how we feed our children that are in our schools. Um, and there was a big push about creating actual scratch kitchens. So this is like really great to see that we're putting this into practice without much of us. Putting in input, the fact that it becomes your business model is actually really empowering. Not the bad part. The, the, a, a, as a parent of the district, there are two words. I would say Liz probably knows the two words I'm going to probably ding you on, uh, and those are the words fun lunch. Uh, although I know that they meet a bare minimum standard when it comes to feeding children. I also think that they have no place in schools. Uh, because a lot of the times they tend to have higher processed sugar. Uh, and tend to be just junk, for lack of a better word. Uh, i- is there anything that we can do? And I know that the, at the end of the day, our ultimate goal is making sure that children get fed. Is there anything that we can do in order to enhance what that fun lunch is? Instead of the traditional muffin, cheese stick and banana or whatever it may be?
So at the fun lunch as it's packed, it doesn't have any of the great stuff. It's making sure our students know what else they can take along with it. That they can go up to that extra extra bar, they can get that spinach salad to go with it, they can get that cucumber tomato. Marinate cube, they can get all these other stuff with it. One of the things that we're doing right now is we're looking at a different muffin. Um, yes, it is meets the requirement, but there are better items out there. So we are looking at a different muffin. We also, I don't do the cereal one. I don't know if you guys did the cereal fun lunch before, but that is not on my menus. So that one is definitely gone. Um, they have, they have like the pizza and the cheese, but something that I've done in the past. And can incorporate, we do diced ham. Or diced turkey with the cheese cubes. And then they have the whole grain crackers and grapes. Uh, along with their other sides. It's fun for them. It, it's something they can sit there and almost, you know, like build and enjoy doing that. Another thing that we did incorporate this year as a fun lunch is also the hummus fun lunch. And they enjoy that too. So it's uh celery sticks, carrots, peppers, broccoli, tomatoes with the hummus. And then we do that with the cheese stick and potato. So there is other fun lunches out there.
Perfect.
Now. I take away muffin fun lunch, I take away participation. So that is, that is something that we would need to monitor, right? And again, it's ultimately what you folks want to see on the menu. But if it's something where we're seeing drastic, it might be something that we want to relook at. It certainly limits how often it is. It does not have to be on every month. It can be cycled in, you know, it could go every couple of months. Maybe it'll be a nicer treat to have. Every now and then, and then work in those other ones that we do have.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna, um, microphone.
It should activate with your voice.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing, Carl. Carl has said.
Sing into it, it works better.
Yeah, I think. Even though. Have the option to add to it, a lot of kids, you know, with sensitivities and things like the person trying things, just gonna. Walk away that muffin and that. And giving them that option is like the easy way out.
Yep.
Um. Which I love that you have uh got the USDA grant to expose, just like touch, I mean. Even just touching a vegetable is so challenging for kids. Um, but I wanted to um. Ask with Global Eats student in Melville, um, and Hathaway, is that. Have you been able to have that program at the middle school or high school?
Not yet, not yet. And it is part, it is geared to them as well, so it will definitely be.
I think that's really exciting because it's come up with our school climate and cultures of many work that we could be. Really uh valuing different cultures or where people are from. Um, and the best way to do this is through food.
Right.
And you, you mentioned earlier that, you know, bringing in a family recipe or something like that, but I think um. Having that awareness um in middle school and high school is really important to. Be familiar with um the communities they're living in.
Yes, so even if we don't do it at the formal level of a global eats, we certainly have those items on the menu. So what we need to do maybe better top is when they are on the menu, have those samples out there, let the students try it. Um, and then, you know, see if they like it, then they can try it. What you and I were speaking about earlier was the um concept coming along the line, this student engagement part of it. Is where students will actually bring in a recipe from the family. You know, Nani made this, our grandma made that, you know, different type of. Um, heritage that they're used to growing up with, that they have. And then we take that recipe and make it legal, combine. And, and do it with the whole brains, a little sodium, so on and so forth. Um, we can do stuff, fun things with it. I was talking about. This with Rachel, how Chef Neil is going to be doing some demos that are going to hit videos, we're going to be sending out via. A just a YouTube link right on the district website. Follow along with him, you can make it. And if we get it, once I have student advisory um committees together. We have students that are, you know, buying into that, want to do it, they can stand right next to Chef Neil and they can have. You know, Nani sauce if they want or so on, and they can come back to their time. But uh, you know, they can come on in and, and do the great, a lot of side with them. I think that'd be great.
I, I think it's just excellent. You're bringing in another whole. Level of education to what would normally be just having a bite to eat, so.
Well, we learn from that, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I culinary trained, I, you know, I'm classic French, right? So, you know, German or I, I had a student, um. We did this something at another school, he was from Turkey. Right, it's great. I never in my entire life have tried any scene from there. And he had brought some in and we tweaked it a little bit and so.
Great. Well, thank you so much for this presentation and we'll look forward to having.
And I am available and um invite me back whenever you want. Take care.
Uh, Dr. Piveras.
Excellent. Would you rather me go up to the podium?
I think so.
I'm sending my.
Laptop with me, perfect. Great, thank you. And I know that Donna left already, but that was, I just do want to say that. That was only five months ago that we started with all the transitions with Charles. The fact that they have made the changes that they need. Already makes me so hopeful for what the future will bring with that. So I just didn't want to recognize that five months, that's all that entire team.
Incredible.
Alright, excellent. So this evening I'm going to be reviewing um our teaching and learning summer programming and. Um, this has been really exciting. It's definitely a process that it takes us to bring together. Um, just suggestions from our teachers and community connections and really put together a really comprehensive program, so. Next slide. Alright, excellent. So this summer, we're going to be using our remaining S R three funds along with other funding sources to provide students with. Various summer learning opportunities. These opportunities include academic interventions, extended school year services, credit recovery. Our summer performing arts club and Algebra One readiness camp along with continuing our collaboration with the Ag Innovation Program. At the farm. Uh, these programs are in addition to all of the amazing programs that our community is already advertising. And anytime we have any advertisements, all of our schools are really good at getting that information out to all of our families. So that we can really support those programs as well. Alright, so with our S R three funding, um, we're going to be including a mix of interventions and enrichment experiences for our students. Including traditional academic interventions at the elementary level. Along with a ramp up to first grade and an elementary theater camp. And that. Elementary theater camp will be open to both Hathaway and Melville students. At the middle school, we're going to be providing enrichment experiences in robotics, chorus, theater, guitar, and the items and physical fitness classes as well. And at our high school, we're going to be providing some uh ELA interventions and we're. Looking to work with Thad Newport to provide our high school students with STEM enrichment camps. So. That's work that actually on this scale has connected me with Thad Newport and I've been in collaboration with them. Uh, we're looking to get a teacher to support the work as well and we're looking to run it through our high school at the end of June. Next slide. Um, this summer, we're also going to be using our S R three funds to support a performing arts club. So this will be new. Uh, this year, the club's going to be directed by one of the parents that collaborates in some of the efforts here at the middle school, Tara Woods. Um, she came to me with a proposal. Um, I had some discussions and it really does look like um. An excellent experience for our students. It's going to be students uh grade five through twelve. And right now, we're working at trying to obtain a license for the wizard class. And so if we're successful in the next week, they're going to be holding rehearsals as um. As soon as, right after the um Fourth of July, so they'll have. Um, they're going to have some, some meetings prior to that, but yeah, we're really excited for this. There's going to be two shows. But I think we'll provide a good opportunity for our families to come together um throughout the summer and just um celebrate our students' successes. Alright, we're going to be continuing with Edgenuity for our summer school software um this coming summer. It's something that we've been working to transition out of. Uh, and the high school team has done a really great job of researching. Other possibilities for credit recovery. We are not there yet for full implementation, so we are going to continue to use Edgenuity. This coming summer, but we'll have um content-specific teachers who are going to provide this students with some direct instruction. And just support for that, um, the modules in the program as well. This year, our program's going to run from July eighth through August first. Right, we also will be providing the big seven-year school services uh to students who qualify for summer instruction in the area of reading, writing, math, and related services. Uh, this E S Y program staffed with coordinators, special education teachers, spanning across all grade levels. A nurse, speech pathologist, occupational therapist, and physical therapist. Uh, services are going to begin on July ninth. Um, they, there is one program starting on the eighth, but all other services will begin on July ninth. And the amount of days the students um receive depends on, uh, upon their needs. Another exciting summer opportunity earlier this spring, our high school team's security grid through ride to provide incoming ninth graders. Uh, from Portsmouth and neighboring communities with the opportunity to participate in an Alge- Algebra One readiness camp. So this camp is going to involve four major projects and that's going to. Allow students to use exploration and discovery with these projects to connect Algebra One to real world on the experiences and programs. We're excited for that as well. And uh last year, and but certainly not least, we've been collaborating with Ag Innovation uh for the last few summers, so we're going to continue. To collaborate with them to provide our middle school students with the opportunity to spend part of their summer. At the Ag Innovation Farm, students again will be working with an agricultural focus, engineering projects, bird watching. Working with small animals, working in the greenhouse, and fishing. This program is going to be funded through Dodea Grants along with other grants that um. Uh, Sarah Cherry has uh to speaker, so. That's it for my presentation. Any questions? We have a lot going on this summer, yes.
I'm just going to speak loudly because we're in a theater, I don't care. Um, how do people sign up for like the elementary theater camp and some of these other activities going on in the summertime?
So information will be going out next week. It's been. It, it's all good intentions of trying to get the program together early on in May, but just with the um. Collaboration with the teachers, having teachers who actually would like to come in and support through this throughout the summer. Um, we finalized it all just at the end of last week. I have um let everybody know that we're going to be moving forward, so now they're. They'll be sending out all of that information. You should expect that within the next week.
Absolutely. Love that we're doing programs like this and I, I feel it's extremely valuable. Um, and I appreciate you putting in the work and the team putting in the work of making it possible. Um, as we go forward and we kind of learn. The process a little more to maybe get the information out sooner, recognize the challenges for this year. Um, but just note, there's so many summer camps that fill up so quickly that. By the time people hear this, they might have already signed up and I just want to make sure we get, get this out in front of people.
Yes, I'm, I'm happy that you actually mentioned that. I mean. I heard you loud and clear last year and we really did work at it. The difference is that, you know, a lot of those summer programs, they're like after the new year, they're already putting things together, organizing it. I understand that parents want to secure spots. It's been difficult and it's also been difficult with the funding. Because we've had to amend our S R three grant multiple times in order to secure these funds. So I would say that our first step for next year is going to. So I would say that our first step for next year is going to be funding funds to support our summer programming. I hope that the last four years of programming has really um shown the community that this is something that we need to continue. They're just trying to work through how we're going to be able to do that. So I will make every effort to get that information out as soon as possible.
And any support you need and recognize the funding is the first steps. I'm happy to help support.
Thank you.
Yeah, can we charge?
I certainly think we can have that conversation.
Well, I mean, I'm just talking like the theater camps or some of the other programs. I mean, that might be.
For anything that's enrichment or.
In conversations with Tara Woods, um, the parent that's going to be running that um that camp this summer, we had discussed the possibility of charging. Because we have S R funding, I really was against charging this time around, knowing that full well that we would have to look at charging moving forward. I really think that bringing fifth to twelfth grade uh students together and having a a performance that can really uh support all of those levels and bring the entire community into the summer, it's going to be a really great experience. Hopefully, it's a true success, and we will certainly try to find the funds to support that.
Excellent. Excellent job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright, um, moving on to our superintendent's update. Dr. Kenworthy.
Thank you. Uh, first up, our personnel update since our last school committee meeting, and this one will be really short because we just have one. Um, things will heat up as we hit uh June. Of course, uh, we're starting to interview and um we'll be hiring for our open positions for next year, and then we'll have small coaching appointments. But um, the only personnel update since our last meeting is we are welcoming back Tim Marham to the district. Uh, Tim was a teacher with us for many years and left to take an administrative position uh in Providence. Uh, he is is coming back, um, exercising his rights to do so uh through state law and the N E A contract. And he is going to be the coordinator of student life, filling one of those positions at the high school for next year. Moving on to district updates, it's our last meeting. Uh, Hathaway last week held two family events. Uh, kindergarten classes, I get to uh sit in on one of these, uh, performed mini musicals around the theme How Does Your Garden Groove? Uh, student costumes included different varieties of fruits and vegetables. I don't know if they were uh continuing with the fresh fruit vegetable focus at Chartwell's, but it was absolutely adorable. Uh, and I know fourth grade classes as well held a recorder concert performances for their families, so that was a big hit. Uh, Melville, uh, they had a couple of performances last week and then finished up today. I know uh Mrs. McDee mentioned it as well. Mrs. Ian was there uh for the last performance of Beauty and the Beast. This is their theater bug program which they started uh last year, and it has been a big hit at Melville. So it was another fantastic uh performance. At P M S, grade four students from Hathaway and Melville will be taking a field trip uh soon to the middle school. They will receive a tour from Anchored for Life's uh students as well as members of the eighth grade student leadership team. And the trip will come with uh time that they're able to spend in fifth grade classrooms. The school is looking forward to welcoming their future middle school patriots. Uh, P H S, um, last week, uh juniors celebrated with their guests at the junior prom, which took place at the Officers Club on the Newport Naval Base uh last Friday. Uh, the evening started with a barbecue buffet, and then students danced the night away, took full advantage of the fully stocked candy bar. And uh, P H S is now in full swing preparing for the senior prom, which is set to take place on June fifth at Goat Island. Uh, also, uh, last Friday, May seventeen, members of the Portsmouth Police Department were at P H S. This was the second uh year to celebrate National Pizza Day. Uh, so we always uh coordinate this and get permission from Chartwell's to do so. But uh, the police department uh pays uh for the pizza, which they uh set up in the courtyard, and they hand out the pizza and socialize with students, and it was um was another great success. So we thank them uh for taking the time to do that. I wanted to thank the Hathaway Parent Teacher Association for having me as their guest speaker uh last week. And this concluded uh my parent organization meetings at each uh school this year. So those are um always um, you know, great opportunities that I look forward to and engaging with those uh key groups that do so much for us uh in each of our schools. And lastly, I just had reminders again about upcoming end of year activities you may be interested in. Of course, uh, things will kick off next week with our senior week activities. Um, two big events that anchor uh, you know, the beginning and end of that week. On Monday, June third, will be a senior awards night in the P H S auditorium, and then graduation on Friday, June seventh, which which this year is taking place on the turf field, where they're permitting. Uh, and then as we get into the following week, uh, each of our schools has opportunities all the way from pre-k up through grade four, and then we have a grade eight promotional exercise uh this year at the middle school as well. And that'll take place the following week, and our last day of the school year will be on Monday, June seventeenth. That concludes my district updates unless there are any questions.
Alright, seeing no questions. Thank you very, very much.
Yep.
Um, busy, busy last few weeks of activities coming up here.
We're in that stretch.
How much more can we fill the schedule with? So I think it's great that the middle school and the elementary schools are doing these promotional activities. That's really wonderful. Um, okay, approval of school committee minutes.
I move, I move for the approval of the school committee meeting minutes of uh May fifteenth and the executive session meeting minutes of May fifteen.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Yes, I'm there. Oh, yeah. Okay, unanimous uh seven uh zero. Uh, can I have a motion for business A, please?
Move the discussion in action on the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five part-time substitute rate.
Second.
Alright, um, uh, Dr. Kenworthy.
Thank you. Uh, so I'm asking for your approval tonight of uh for next school year, uh twenty-four, twenty-five. These will be part-time and substitute rates, and uh these have been reviewed by personnel and are being forwarded from that uh subcommittee. Uh, so they are um as presented to you, just one change uh um from what's there on the sheet.
Seeing no questions or comments. All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous seven zero. Uh, business B, please.
Remove the discussion in action on the contract with Bradley Schools to provide school meals.
No, I think you uh.
I'm sorry. Which one? No, one?
B.
Oh, I'm sorry. Discussion in a uh move the discussion in action on twenty-four, twenty-five salary increases for individual contract employees.
Second.
Dr. Kenworthy.
Thank you. Uh, so these are the last remaining individuals uh who have current contracts, so there's been no contract uh renewal this year. Therefore, they need a final salary approved by you. Uh, so uh my recommendations were presented last week to the personnel subcommittee and they're forwarded to the full committee this evening for your approval.
Alright, seeing no comments or questions. All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous uh seven zero. Item C, please.
Move a discussion in action on the contract with Bradley Schools to provide school meals.
Second.
Okay, second, Ms. McDade on that one. Uh, Dr. Kenworthy or Ms. Deero?
I'll let Ms. Deero elaborate. Uh, this is uh actually an arrangement we've had in place for a number of years. It requires a new approval from the run of property of education this year, so I wanted to bring that to um you for final approval, but Ms. Deero can elaborate.
Yep. So um Portsmouth through its food service provider, Chartwell's, has been providing breakfast and lunch meals uh to Bradley School Portsmouth for many years. Uh, Ride requires us to execute an annual school food authority to school food authority prototype agreement. Uh, we provide meals to Bradley during the school year as well as the summer. Uh, Bradley pays a fixed price per meal, uh which we record as catering revenue in our food service uh fund, and that goes to support the entire food service program.
Did we lose any money from this?
No, we make money.
We make money.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, that's right.
Are there any other catering things that we gain revenue for, or is that catering line only for Bradley?
Uh, there's also internal catering. So for example, if we do the um orientation day with teachers and provide breakfast, that's considered catering revenues. But the only outside revenue is Bradley School.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. Seeing no further questions or comments. All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous uh seven zero. Uh, uh, item uh D.
Move a discussion in action on budget transfers over five thousand dollars.
Second.
Deero.
Yes, thank you. Uh, there are nine transfers over five thousand dollars that require your approval. Uh, I think most of them are self-explanatory, but there were three that I did want to um provide a little more detail. So uh, budget journal entry number two nineteen, this is a transfer of twenty-five thousand dollars from the social worker salary line, worker contracted services line. Uh, our P M S social worker resigned earlier in the year, and we needed to contract uh with an agency to provide the service for the rest of the year. Uh, number two twenty-two, um, this is a transfer of two hundred ninety thousand five hundred seventeen dollars to purchase uh I T equipment. Based on our projections for this year, we believe we're able to pull forward uh F Y twenty-five's uh equipment purchases to F Y twenty-four.
Yeah.
Uh, and number two twenty-three, uh, this is a transfer of fifty thousand dollars to the other services line to partially fund consulting services uh needed to help create the district's new five-year strategic plan. Our current plan expires at the end of F Y twenty-five.
Yeah, and these were uh discussed in finance as Ms. Ever mentioned earlier and um supported by the finance subcommittee. If you have one question.
Yeah.
So, and and it's just because I don't understand it, ice rinks. So we have a twenty-two thousand dollar um uh line for ice rinks, and then I see eight thousand here, and then there's twelve hundred in the under five thousand. So is that thirty-one thousand for ice rink?
Uh, it's ice cream. Uh, yes, it is. It's rentals and also uh locker rentals. So the rink rental and locker rentals. Now.
Because we, is that because we went so far in the playoffs that we had to have extra time, or are we under budget for next year?
No, we we went all the way to the finals as well as absorbed an increase in the hourly rate from the rink.
Okay, and uh, I don't remember what we put in the budget for next year. Is it at twenty-two or is it uh enough to for?
I honestly don't remember. It's whatever the uh, the athletic director submitted. Yeah.
Okay, I was just.
Yeah. Sometimes we're under that line, sometimes we're over. We're slightly over last year, and we're way over this year.
But yeah, well, on the other hand, they won.
They did. They did.
Careful what we wish for.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, this does need to be voted on because it's over five thousand. Any other questions, comments? No? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous uh seven zero. Uh, move item, please.
Remove a discussion in action on the schedule of fees for facility and fuel rentals.
Second.
Um, I have, this also went through finance subcommittee. I'd just like to give a shout out to Ms. Rachel Marciano. She did a great job in terms of research and uh comparative assessment with other districts. It's all in the subcommittee backup if anybody wants to look at it. And um, I I would just like to, there was a lot of work that went into that, and I'd just like to applaud it for it, so. Questions, comments? Mr. Deero, Mr. Dr. Kenworthy.
I just wanted to really, I think it's obvious from the top of the sheet that uh these fees had not yeah, these fees have been at least not changed since twenty sixteen, so it was time to update them. Obviously, we went through uh COVID and everything in those years after. Um, but again, uh, as Dr. Copa mentioned, this is, Ms. Marciano did a great job looking at comparisons with other local districts.
And some of them were fixed, like the P H S auditorium booth was just were fixed. And all of the funds from the facility uh fee rental uh go back into maintaining those facilities. So I think it's uh, it's good to help ensure we can do that. See no comments, questions? Alright, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous uh seven zero. Now we're on policy. Ms. McDade.
Uh, I move for a discussion in action of policy uh K F, Community Use of School Facilities.
Second.
And we looked at this um in our last meeting. And so this would be a final read.
Um. I I thought we were going to uh remove any reference to the attachment, which I think the the one I looked at, maybe I checked the wrong one or something, but I thought I thought saw that the attachment was still there. And I think we need to change. It says fee rental fee schedule. I think we should use the full title that is now facility rental fee schedule. Um, but I don't think we, I I thought you didn't want to have attachments on there.
Correct.
Do you see where it is?
It's, um, sorry, I'm.
It's an attached schedule of fees.
It's the very last page.
Yeah. All the group shop pay.
We point to it.
It's shown in the attached schedule of fees.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. So if we make those two changes, I think could approve it, right? Down there at the bottom.
Sure. What, sorry, what did, what did you suggest that it read?
So we meant, I'm looking for the thing here.
Probably this title.
On page three, I mean on page.
Page five.
Okay.
Last page.
Just change the full title to the.
And it would have attached all other group shop pay.
Okay, yes, okay.
Rental.
Now I remember, sorry.
As illustrated in the facility rental fee schedule.
It's in here several times, so just search and replace it.
You want to, Dr. Kenworthy, do you want us to vote on this for approval, or do you want?
Yeah, if that's the only change, I I think I've, I've got it now. It's, it's easy enough. I I keep that.
Mm-hmm. Alright.
We're on, I will make that change.
You, do I need to make a motion to make that change, or is changing?
Um, probably wouldn't hurt, right? An amended motion.
Um, I move for approval of policy um K F with uh changes to uh on page five to section two point two and three point one.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous seven zero. Thank you. Item G, please.
I move for discussion in action of policy A D B, drug-free schools.
Second.
And again, we saw this in the, in the last meeting.
We condensed it.
I think there were some suggestions that we incorporated there, right? The Mrs. Acquire.
Yep. Alright, seeing no comments or questions. All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous seven zero. Item H, please.
I move for a discussion in action of policy I J J, selection of instructional materials.
Second.
And once again, we saw this last time.
And you did, you did have some suggestions on the uh last part, three point two, and the changes weren't, should have been incorporated there.
And you gave us a clean copy.
Yeah.
See no further questions or comments? This is a final read, right? So all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous seven zero. And then uh, item uh five, yeah.
Um, I move for discussion in action of policy coding change, G C A A, professional staff hiring.
Second.
Right, and I can take this one. This is a um coding change which we discovered. Uh, so back on March twentieth, you approved the final read of uh a new policy uh crim for criminal background checks um for job applicants and employees, and they get, it just needed its own policy. Um, that was approved as policy G C F. As we went to upload that, we noticed that there was a a current policy with that coding. Uh, so that's the policy that you see here, this professional staff policy, which was approved um uh, I believe back um in two thousand and twenty. Um, so in any event, we we just, we double-checked on both. Um, the criminal background check policy approved in March should be G C F as it was approved. However, this policy should be G C A A, it's professional staff policy. We did take the opportunity, uh, we didn't notice any other changes uh that would need to be made. So it's again, just requesting that policy change to the uh, you know, what should be the actual coding of G C A A.
Gotcha, and you'll obviously change the policy revision date one at the bottom.
Correct.
Alright. Seeing no comments or questions. All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous seven zero. Thank you for all the hard work of the policies of you guys.
Yeah.
Get through a lot.
More meeting coming up.
Uh, moving on to reports. Mr. Deero.
Uh, we have the.
We have the transfers under five thousand.
Yep. Any questions or comments? My question was already answered with the link one. But the under five thousand is just for review.
Okay.
Very much.
Yep.
And B.
Okay, so through April, we are trending on budget for expenditures and approximately two hundred thousand dollars favorable on revenues due to better-than-expected C T E enrollments and increased federal impact aid. Lunch debt continues to trend towards about a fifteen thousand dollar balance by the end of June, which is much improved from last year's thirty thousand, thirty thousand dollar balance. Much thanks to our building principals and their staff, who I know have been working tirelessly on this. Any questions?
Seeing no questions, thank you so much. Those are, good to have those in very clear formats. Ms. Keon, do you want to say a word about the climate culture subcommittee tomorrow? What we're doing?
So we have a meeting tomorrow at ten a.m. at Melville. And for anyone who can't attend tomorrow, I think we already mentioned that our next meeting is.
There's some opportunities for input at that meeting as well. Okay, so upcoming meetings include climate and culture, as just referenced. Policy Subcommittee on June third, everybody needs to keep on their calendars a June sixth meeting. That would be in the evening, correct?
Yes.
And this is in case there are any developments stemming from the prom and we reviewed for graduation. And then we have our school committee, June eleventh meeting scheduled, followed by a town council budget hearing on June twelfth. With that, if there are no further comments, can I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll move, second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous seven zero. And thank you to the middle school for hosting us tonight. And I have a chess book for the chess team.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.